Pleading to order everyone if you please stand and say the pledge. The first item on our agenda is a special exception for friends of West Hampton Ambulance. Any motion for yield but no?
No.
And if I can.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a representative from the ambulance? If you know. Well. There. There was a little confusion on that one, I'll tell you later. So basically, this is just a special exception for their electronic sign. We had a public hearing at our last meeting and referred it to the planning board. Planning board had a meeting considering the application, came back with no exception or objections to the application as long as they conformed to the code and the size restrictions. So unless anyone on the board or anyone else has another issue or comment on this, we can close the public hearings, a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Anything on favors?
Aye.
We can read that this mission at the end of the meeting after we go through our discussion topics. If we have four or five restrictions to read. With next item on the agenda, the flupsi sign for Ridges Bay project that you're interested in having a sign and they're. What's that called installation of the Marina?
Good evening, I'm the board, Aaron Turciani, Director of the video, on behalf of Ridges Bay Project, who are neither the Hill County Department. First, I want to start by thanking the board for the support for many years. Give you a short update, we raised and seeded about seven hundred and forty thousand oysters this year. And which brings our grant total to only like two point seven million over the last twelve years. And our goal is to raise and raise and seed a million oysters a year. And I just want to also celebrate the fact that the town of Southampton recently gave us a grant for just shy of three hundred thousand dollars to renovate the Rainer Fishack on Beaverton Creek. And that's going to become an educational center with its own flupsi. It's really an exciting time. And and one of the cornerstones of what we do is our education effort. And when people walk up to a flupsi, it's fairly uninspiring because it's just a wooden honey dock and it doesn't really have anything going on. They're putting hundreds of thousands of living oysters in there. So this is a sign that we proposed and I gave you handouts of smaller size. And we, you know, basically, it's it's simple and informative. We have a map of the eastern side of Ridges Bay and Quantuck Bay. And we have locations of our three flupsi's in Quag, West Hampton Beach, and Peaver Dam. And then we have actually four Whister Gardens. And those are much smaller operations, they're only about ten thousand oysters in each one, whereas the flupsi is full several hundred thousand. But they're tended to by youngsters, anywhere from, what, you know, eight to fifteen years old.
Yeah.
That are here through the summer through our outreach to schools and to various local clubs.
Chris has actually done it.
Apparently some adults. So this is the sign that we posed for the West Hampton Beach Marina where we've had hugely successful flupsi. And at the picket point, we have an extra car. So you two, once any questions?
What's right with this?
This is the sign we're thinking about. Well, in the conspicuous but convenient spot, so it doesn't get anybody's way, right now a flupsi is in the, what is it, the northeast corner of Marina? So I would think somewhere in proximity to that, but nothing just there with mooring and walking or.
There's a grassy area right in front of that, that would probably be.
No, it's great because you can't tell what that is, it looks just like a rope down.
It does, and.
Every Sunday I see the guys like take care of it, which is great.
And they get a thousand questions, so it would be great if there was a place for the community to just ask us.
I think I deter some of the children who'd like to play on it. So that they don't. I'd be appropriate.
Actually, we have a sign that we put up at Fog Dock. I didn't realize there was a problem there too. We can put, it just said, please.
It's right. But yes, I think this would be a, well, educational addition to the flupsi installation.
Something stationary, you had to ask, something like stationary.
Yeah, I mean, like on either one or two posts, lightly annoying.
Would maybe.
Yeah, they have, you know, super, similar to what they have down for the winters. Just on the east side, on the east side of the bridge.
Even even adjacent to the ladder, so people know that they're affiliated.
Well, we've got some spots and happy to bring some feedback.
Any other questions or?
I mean, ideally, we're looking at putting this up, I would say sometime mid-April.
Yep.
Before the season starts, so we can meet with you before that.
Great.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Baby wants to be with you. The next item is a special exception application, minute work preparation, is there a representative? Okay, good afternoon, gentlemen. We do have several other buildings that have special exceptions for offices such as this, and we have granted in the past. Does the board have any questions about this, the application, what's submitted and distributed? And as long as there's no active industrial activity going on, like constructing things on the site, it's strictly offices, correct?
Yeah, it's our professional office.
Right.
Administrative alone.
That's great, that's that's a common occurrence, you know, so.
We need to be on this side of the traffic.
Any questions from the board? No, okay, our next step is to refer this to the planning board, so we have a resolution at the end of the meeting that will do that. And then the planning board will consider this application as well, give the recommendation to us, and then we can tap on the special exception. You might have picked one there before.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Sola. Okay, I'm going to jump to your headline because I anticipate the next discussion may be a little longer. So, yeah, members of the board, thank you for hearing. Sure. I agree, that's all of them, West Hampton Ambulance and part of the rest of the team. I serve as the secretary of management. They're asking for prevent to use the Rainer Fishack on December twenty first, it's a great swim day, to do a poll of funds. So they will handle all logistics, arbitre removal, water safety, they will be have there from the ambulance. We certainly invite the fire department, police department to be there and participate. Come on, Steve. If apples mean that this makes money, that's okay.
Well, it's a kickoff, again, this team is rich with talent, incredible people, but they don't have a budget line for the equipment they need, so. Thankfully, the kickoff.
Any board members have any questions or objections or thoughts?
Well, I mean, they have, you know, their ropes or fins, that's kind of, there's no, put it this way, if they enter those surf line and nobody can go, there's no plan B for that. If they can't get back, then it's coming. So we really need the personal board grass and the sleds to take a chance. So that's really the next level of this. We have one that was donated by another agency, this power, it really is a lot of work. It's not your first to find us.
Chris, I don't know if everyone here really knows what the rescue team is about. We've discussed it, could you maybe just let the board know?
The West Hampton Ambulance, two to three years ago, agreed to take this team on. We kind of put the team together before we had a home. We tried to have a multi-jurisdictional team put together between all the villages on Dune Road. But the insurance companies just couldn't really come up with a solution for that, workers comp and so on, so. But we had trained everybody and wrote a plan and, and, you know, a whole operation plan. And being a member of the ambulance for years, I approached them and they, they thought it was a great idea. So they basically took us in under their infrastructure for the liability and the workers comp and so on. But as far as equipment, we really don't have a budget for that, so it's really up to us to raise funds for that. So I've called in a lot of favors for vehicles and other stuff, but now it's really time to, you know, step up. There's other teams further out east that have a lot of money, but they don't have the talent we have. I mean, it's incredible, these people that we have, they're doctors, lawyers, teachers, police officers, firemen, local business people that just, they love lifeguarding. Some of them are older than me, put it that way. But most of them are, as Paul Bass was, that's captain of the team, says the studs, you know, of the lifeguard service, so. And so we respond when there's a water rescue, the fire departments come out, but they don't enter the surf zone. So that's where there's a niche. We've visited all the fire departments within the ambulance district as well as further to east on Dune Road, Hampton Bay's and East Quag. And they acknowledged that we, we don't do what you do. So we're working on MOUs with Hampton Bay's. East Quag is already in place, and obviously, West Hampton, we've done drills with them. So we all know each other, they've had a few rescues, and so what we, what we need, big problem is we don't have access to the fire service funding. So there, there is money for fire services for water rescue, but without a fire service. So it's, it just doesn't fit, but we can make it work.
Supposedly. At least for Quack Village, and in speaking with myself and your chiefs, we, what Chris came to really rip to our attention was that one of the points of this group is to keep our, our officers out of the water. Most times, our officers are first on scene to these cases, and we really aren't trained in that aspect. So there's really this opening in how do we deal with these, with these potential drownings that are occurring? And Chris really took despite a horn, the vote by the horns here, and really developed a team, found a leader in East Hampton and really bringing it to light. So he's done incredible work with this, it's really been appreciated.
Thanks, Steve. It's true to that point, there's probably fi- far between five and eight police officers a year, I don't have this year's figure, that drown, trying to make a rescue. You know, that they shouldn't be doing, but we all know after Labor Day, we're in, so.
Okay.
But not anymore.
Okay, well, thank you for your time, and I think we'll be able to accommodate you very easily.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. And I, I took the liberty of asking for the fee to be waived, but if you, if you can't, that's fine. And we'd love to put the village of West Hampton Beach on back in the T-shirt.
We have a probably waving piece for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. So have a. Resolution on the agenda for the December fifth meeting for that. And wait. Okay. All right, next. We had a conversation last meeting, last reception, I should say, about the beach rules and rates. Some discussions had, Mr. Teeman was going to come up with some proposed rule change wording, and he's unable to be with us this evening. At that meeting, I tried to convey Sean's concerns and my concerns about a drastic change. Yes, a small change, but is understandable. So I just, I thought it would be important to have Sean and Tom to come and share with us a little bit of the history and why these rules are in place and their perspective, because they're the ones that have to deal with those all the time. We set the rules, but they have to enforce. So I just invited them again because he couldn't come last meeting, so, and I don't feel I did justice to his perspective, so. That's why I asked him to come on in, so. Do you want to?
Well, I'll say a couple of things tonight, Chris. Okay. First of all, I want to say that I'm proud to say that we have lifeguards being on that team. So we have Rogers, our head lifeguard is very involved in that team, and we have, I think, three or four lifeguards in that team, so. There, that's, that's great, that we have our own, own people. As far as the rules go, the rules have not, they've been, they've been adjusted, they haven't changed since, since way, way back. They've been the same since Tom, non-transferable, he's been here for, and I wrote that in a letter to you. And I was just responding to some, like, questions from, from people. But they've been the same since I've been here for ten years, it's my tenth summer. There were some, you know, anytime there's a, there's a reaction to something, like Mayor Moore and I, as I said in a letter, made a, we started doing a transfer form. But that led to a tremendous amount of misuse scam. Once the word gets around, people really, really misuse that kind of thing. Mike and Tom, Josh Tuttle for eight years, and Emma and I see this increase. The first year, we, we had, I think, forty-eight transfers where someone was transferring their second sticker to someone who was sometimes legitimately there, someone living with them for the summer or whatever. Where for years, way back to Tom and Max, you were able to transfer one sticker from West Hampton Beach to someone in West Hampton, to Remsenburg, to Quiog. Now that you do, the village, you lost that renting income or that, that purchase revenue, right? So, you know, Mayor Moore and I did that, the first year was very small, the second year word got around, by the third year, we're in the three, four hundred transfers. And we, Mike and Tom and I, especially Mike and I, because we're at the window, knew when people were asking, you know, questions like, where do we live, what's our last name, you know, that happened a lot. And, you know, after doing it for a long, long time, you can see that there are a tremendous amount of misuse. There are people who are legitimate, of course, but those people were usually renters, and we found that this summer that people who had different colored stickers on their cars because they were, they, some years were getting it for free from a friend, and then they had to start paying. That was, you told me recently.
Yeah, I'll give you one example, gentleman from Quiog, in a black Range Rover, had four resident stickers, and this year came with a non-resident. So I said to him, oh, you moved, he said, no, he said, for the last four years, I've been buying second resident sticker for half price. They were paying him two hundred, he was paying them two hundred dollars, and he said two hundred for four years. He said, but you changed the rules this year, it has to be the same address for the registration. So he said, I had to pay five hundred. Now to make a long story short, you lost sixteen hundred bucks, he saved eight hundred, and the resident paid eight hundred, but you were the loser. And that happens, you could probably name thirty people or more. And if you're a renter in Remsenburg, you just lost a thousand dollars. And it happens quite often. The other, the, the real problem is the Airbnbs. I mean, people will switch those walk-on passes, the only way we can tell is if you, Ralph, gave it to Denise and it said Ralph on there, and she came in with it. Obviously, that's a mistake.
Well, we've had, we've had Denise swear she was Ralph. So, so, so in ten years, I, we've seen a lot of stuff. Just have to decide, I mean, we're trying to follow the rule, trying to follow the transferable rule, we're trying to follow, but trying to make sure the revenue that's due comes in to rental miss slash rental purchase of the sticker. I mean, I think for the first time, even though it was a little, a little rough at the beginning, we, I, I want to make this point, we have as many or more people who appreciate, who say very positive things about getting rid of scams or people misusing as many more than people. People just go, oh, that's great, oh, good, you should, they should do that.
And I agree with that, and we can come all the time, saying, you finally got it right.
Yeah, we did hear that a little bit. There's, there were some loud folks who were, you know, dissenting and, you know, I, I think, you know, my opinion is we try to, anything that was, what seemed, someone wanted to legitimize what they were saying, we sent to the office, and I love that the, the office made the decision. And pretty much when people showed paperwork, I don't think anyone was denied.
Right. I think before we said we should not make decisions for your main decisions of this type.
Agreed. The kids don't make those, the kids don't make the decision.
It comes to you.
Yeah.
And in dealing with it over the past season, there were some legitimate situations where people wanted to go to the beach and just, for example, an elderly person owns the home, but doesn't drive, doesn't own the car. And wanted their caretaker or their son to have the sticker, even though that person lives in, say, formerly a center of Ridge, it's, you know, it's like a foreign country out there. So. Kind of mentioned, well. So those, those kinds of situations are understandable exceptions to a party's pass rule. I, I can get that. And other situations where both parents are working and they have a babysitter that drives, and they want the babysitter to be able to drive their kids to the beach. To me, that, that kind of makes sense, those kind of, I would call it a hardship, hardship transfers, the label I'm developing to put on. And maybe a hardship transfer application that some of us trustees or mayor or combination of one or both or whatever could approve. Would stem flow, because I'm afraid if we open this up completely, as even I suggested probably ten, twelve years ago, that just stop with this nonsense, put the stickers into tax bill and let people have them. If that happened, we would be handing out excess of five thousand stickers, and we only have two hundred and one spots. And that would create a great deal of acrimony because people that want to go to the beach can't go to the beach because there's no parking spaces left.
How many spots, you said two hundred and one, that's at Rogers?
Yes.
And how many stickers do you hand out every year, parking?
Yeah, oh, um, plus twenty-five is.
Twenty-five plus a resident?
Yeah.
No, actually given.
Yeah, one, twenty-five hundred plus about another five hundred.
Oh, twenty-five hundred as well. But here's back to you, only hundreds. And that would be, it would more than double the number of stickers that are out. So I'm very concerned about opening it up completely, but having, like I said, hardship exemption or something, that wouldn't make sense to me.
There's always, there's always been a way, you, you are, are allowed for walk-on passes, right? Unless you have more children between the ages of ten and twenty-six, which then you can get more walk-on passes. Some people have four kids between ten and twenty-six, plus the two, so they get six, right? So if one of those elderly drive, we've always been able to drop off the things, park over the bridge on kind of Saturday. So we've been very, you know, no one said, hey, you can't put your things here, you can't drop things off. And, and that walk over the bridge is usually pretty, it's usually empty, it's usually spots, and, and people deal with that pretty well. So I'm just pointing out that people are allowed to give their other two walk-on passes to whomever they choose, they just don't have this parking privilege.
And they do use it, there's no question about it, they use it. I mean, I babysat children while they go over to prison.
I driven cars of age for people.
Okay, now we're getting into insurance issues.
Older person, you know, it's like, you know.
Have you guys seen any flux of parking, or have you had a miss this summer with too much parking?
No, you know, it's the pandemic news, and I think sharks all over the news, in the newspapers, I think people are saying our kids are scared of. Anyway, but I think there's been a, a lower amount of people since the pandemic. The year before the pandemic, we closed thirteen times, thirteen times where the parking lot was full and closed, we had the in-crowd, we're in. We haven't had that since that year, since the year before. We close, you know, a few times this summer, not tons of times.
Do you think thirteen was so many when you consider it's like a four-month period?
No, I think it was a lot, yeah. And, and, yeah, the other days, well, here's the other thing too, I can't tell you how many times we have residents that are angry that there are non-resident stickers in the parking lot. I had one person park their car on Dune Road, put it in the park and turn it off, and walk in and left their car there, they're suburban. So they get annoyed at, you get, you know, that at the, at the booth sometimes for people who are angry that they don't have a spot and they're a village taxpayer. That happens.
You're telling me that they know that that car over there has.
Well, they see the colored stickers all over the park.
No.
They see the color.
No, when you have a, a resident who always have two stickers, those two parking stickers were the same color?
Yes, but they're looking at the parking lot in red and colors, and they're having to wait in line, kind of like that.
Well, you're like charged for those parking spots.
Right, but they pay taxes for them.
Okay.
I'm just telling you how people react to this.
Okay, so maybe your answer is, don't sell it to anybody, just let the residents have it and pay the taxes.
Well, that's.
And that's their, their decision, my, you know, I think either you go one way or the other, you give them.
But I don't, I mean, I can't go. Who spotted a resident sticker and bitched about it?
Oh, it could be a lot to pay.
That's a. What happened?
Thirty or forty in the summertime easily, and parents will wind up and they're saying, you know, that's how you lose in Remsenburg. Yes, but you paid for that sticker. So if you got hit in the backyard, it's just.
Yeah, that's what we say.
So if you follow what we've done all these years up until this past year, are you suggesting that now we would have all the, we would have to list all the assumptions to the rule? I mean, like, every time somebody has a second sticker, they run in to see Ralph, they have to fill out a notarized form, like.
What else could they do?
I'm saying, if you're going to comply, do what you did this past summer, which I disagree.
I think we could really force a change. I think we could really force change in that.
But you, you yourself, you're listing exceptions like the nanny, uh, the caretaker, so.
Unusual situations, I completely understand.
So when you have these rules in effect, are you going to hand out a sheet of paper with all of the exceptions?
Perhaps. Couple of examples and it's case by case after that and it's, it would be up to the trustees or the, in, this is a proposal, it's not a fact yet.
Are you concerned about revenue, tickets, uh, on stickers or are you concerned about the lot?
I'm concerned about, actually, I'm concerned about both because if, if I did, if we did, as I said in the beginning, hand out five thousand stickers and other, see, the people that don't use them, there are several residents who do not use the beach. And they're entitled to the sticker and they never bother to get one because they don't go. But if they started being able to get a sticker and then hand them out to non-resident, trans relatives, whoever, over time, I think probably not the first year, if we changed to that in that direction, the first year probably wouldn't happen. Second, third year, as Sean said, once the word gets out, people start getting their stickers that they're entitled to and handing them out to whomever. That's going to increase, they'll be handing them out to people that will actually use the beach.
I agree with that, will it be?
I agree, they shouldn't remain there. It takes, it takes, it's not easy to get your sticker. You know, it's like, a lot of times they don't have time to get to, it's a lot of people don't even get to it. So that right there, I think is starting to block people from doing that. And if they want to, if they want to get it for their friend, they actually have to go down there with them. It ain't gonna happen, so that blocks a lot of people as well.
Well, they don't have that problem now because they can't benefit from it.
What I'm saying is in general, like we've. You just mail them out.
Yes.
You just mail them out, you just have your subscription to tax bill, which I agree, you shouldn't do that.
Yeah.
But I, I feel you made a couple of sections, it's gonna be a disaster because everyone's gonna try to get around it. And then it's more work for us, people are gonna be calling us.
I don't know why we just don't go back to what it was two years ago.
Well, the, it got really bad two years ago. The in-between is the bad, is, is the part that feels crappy, to be down there and have people, you know, just being lied to all day or, you know, just feeling that, it's just whoever's gonna be the manager, whoever's there. It's just not a good, that's not a good system. Once it got to the point where the snowball went and it was hundreds of people, you know, it really was a lot of people. Um, that, you know, registrations were all different townships, right? And very close, oh, we lived with them all summer, oh, this is my daughter, this is my, you know, how do you know? Like, you don't, you're like, oh, this is your daughter-in-law, has a different name, okay, you know. Well, I don't, you're in this like weird, like, last summer was the first time you felt like you finally either had to live there or you followed that non-transferable rule or they were one of the owners. It just felt, it didn't feel like you were being beaten, beaten up with scams, you know.
Two years, you, two years ago, you never asked people, who's your second sticker going to?
Of course.
They never asked me.
Well, you.
Well, you filled out the card and you put somebody's name on there and we don't have the right to ask you, does this person live in the village or does this person live outside the village and so forth?
What they ask?
Well, we do on occasion if we know.
Also sometimes.
If, if we know it's obvious.
Yeah, I.
I mean, if, 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 if you live in West Hampton Beach and you're giving your second card and it says New Jersey, I think, you know, that's obvious.
Like when you said people were scamming, was it mainly renters not paying? Was it mainly, like, what was it mainly?
It was mainly, well, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna say something I don't know to be true, but it was definitely renters not paying. It was definitely friends, I'm not sure which was more of.
You know, I understand the mayor's point, Chris's point, well, you know, if we, let's say the parking lot has to close sometimes because there is, you know, the amount of cars, it might not be that many, but if we need more staff and have to pay more staff and have to use some village funds and taxpayer money for that, that's not right either to just be handing them out. So we have to come up with what kind of word.
But one of my biggest problems with, with it was the poor people that followed the rules and did the, did the permit for the rental permit, had their renter pay and then the people who pretended this was whatever and it was just, it was just unfair to the people who followed the rules and, um.
Basically, what it boils down to is a resident, is there work, are the work identities? Because they have, they want to give the sticker away.
Yeah, and then they don't have to pay for it.
Non-resident, you get one sticker and it's on your car, that's it. I mean, I had one man come to me this year and threaten to punch me out because we wouldn't sell him a second non-resident sticker. And I said, no, we don't sell two stickers to non-residents. He said, I'll pay the thousand dollars, I said, you don't have the option.
When you said you had to close the beach, do you also have to close Jetty at all over the summer?
Jetty, Jetty is closed, yeah, it's getting closed more than, uh, Rogers this year. Jetty did close, um, gosh.
How many spots are there?
Forty-five and, um, then there's another. Oh, there are lines, yeah, yeah.
Gosh, most of them weekends?
Most of them are weekends, yes, yeah.
At some point, since we have until May or December. Is Brian going to be turning in what he worked?
It's a good thing to me, I thought it could be. Right, well, yeah, I think, well, what I would like to do, and we've had a good discussion and, uh, we won't continue this, it's not, it's not over yet. And Brian's gonna be here tonight.
But they actually.
I'm sorry?
I keep hearing that, I know that Sean and I discussed this earlier on, I guess I'm, I'm clear as to what the actual rule is. You're saying non-transferable, when I look at that sheet, it doesn't define where your license needs to be registered, your car registered for a resident. It defines it for a renter very clearly. But it doesn't find renter who owns the property, I mean, owner who owns the property but whose car maybe isn't registered here. Right, but that's what I'm saying, it doesn't, you keep saying non-transferable.
Major home is if you own property.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so if your car isn't registered there, let's say you have one car registered here and your child who lives with you has a car that's registered where they go to school, qualifies or doesn't qualify?
Doesn't qualify.
Live with you?
They go away to school, they register their car. Because they go away to school.
They don't live with you, you're right, they're not.
They come home every vacation, they come home over the summer, they still live with you.
Registered at their school?
Yes. Mine never went to school.
Quite honestly, I've never seen.
I can give you an example, but I'm not going to do it.
I, I'm not saying it's not true, I'm saying no one's ever come and said, this is the registration of my child at their school, I've never, I've never seen that.
At the state, which your school is, I don't think that.
It's not. Sydney had a car registered in Virginia for years.
But no one has ever come, I'm just saying no one's ever come to me and said, this is my registration, this is where I go to school, I registered this, I would have. You know, I never say, no, you can't do that, I call the, I say, just give me a day, I'll call the office and.
Not only do I know that that has occurred, I also know someone who actually is the property owner and was told, if you're the child, you can't get it because your car's not registered. And it actually happens to be the property owner. So again.
So a property owner isn't the parent?
Two different examples, property owner is the parent. They, they have one car sticker, that is all that they want, their child who goes away to school, comes home every summer, who has never bought a house or lived anywhere else other than school, denied a sticker because their address is not the same, from the beach, I'm not going to point fingers. Another person, owner of a house.
Never explained to me.
I, I just, I think we're all looking for clarification because what it doesn't say on that chart is any specification for resident. I know as a business owner, I can have two stickers. My red license for years, red Sbiunk. My business is in West Hampton, I own property in West Hampton, I'm entitled to two stickers. It seems to me that as a business owner, since I can give it to a tenant, I actually seem to have more rights than some residents then, if you evaluate it that way. If I can give it to a tenant who lives in Hicksville, because I'm a business owner and I get two stickers, why?
Of course, they say you give it to somebody living in West Hampton, Remsenberg.
Does it?
Sbiunk or Uqaya.
That is not what it reads for commercial property. I can give it to a tenant. If I have a tenant for commercial property.
Yeah.
I'm not arguing that I couldn't be able to, I'm arguing that I would have more, why would I have more?
I think what it was thought was someplace like North Mall is one tax property. Now that owner is not using their two stickers, they give one to Tinino's and one to a lady who did nails, who's a nail place or something or used to. Yeah, they give their two stickers to those two people. And that's something that has always been since I've been here, that the tax property owner has the ability through a commercial form to give it to.
Agreed, but why, doesn't that seem silly that they seem to have more rights than a resident?
I don't.
So if they have someone who stays with them for the summer, they can't give it to that person, but a business owner can decide to give it to a tenant from out of here?
But my point that I'm making is sometimes it's legitimate, someone lives there for the summer and I don't know how to figure that out. And sometimes it's not legitimate and the person.
Fully agree, I'm not hearing that.
Center bridges or, you know, and they say, well, they live here. And, um, we have never questioned that, we, okay, fill out the transfer form and, and that's it.
Forget it was a transfer.
And, um, but. I see this year.
Well, some might not assume they heard some.
With, I, I, Ryan, last discussion, we brought up some points and we, we had some points where we, we always don't come up with proposed wording and.
Yeah.
Sure, so that is not as, it's a process, we're gonna find, hold it a little bit better than it is, let's put it that. We have yet to, we're not gonna finalize anything tonight, absolutely, so it's a work in progress. Does, will we have any more questions for Sean or Tom? I really appreciate you guys coming and sharing, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, I may call on you for input, um, in the future, come up with some wording and just get your, your thoughts and how it may or may not work or whatever. But thanks again, okay?
All right.
And we do have time for the beach rules, I don't anticipate us changing the rates before the budget for the. Who knows? It's a work in progress, as I said, okay? Thank you. The next thing, oh, beautiful handbags. About shooting, the, uh, end of the season, but it seems right now is, I'm talking to the first number fifteen as the end of the season for next season. Uh, because the weather is changing, it's getting nicer, people can move their boats in longer and we still, right now, have a couple of boats left. So people normally leave their boats in beyond the deadline anyway and it's still not gonna be an issue, even if we go have some people that pull them out late. So any objections to changing that aspect of the rules or comment?
That makes sense.
Okay, so I'll put the linear rules and rates on the agenda for December fifth. That way you get the notifications out and, uh, Corlorn will be in charge of that this year and we'll have the response date. I think it's, uh, the January, January fifteenth, so people can sign up and get their slips assigned by that. So there, there is, uh, we are pressed to get the linear rates and rules passed, but the beach can wait until we develop. Okay. Item seven, use of properties in Southampton Town, that's requested to use the meeting room on December second at six P M for a presentation about the, uh, West Hampton. The Navy Center, thank you, uh, that's proposed to be excellent, the elementary schools, so, and I, I would like to waive the fees for them as well. So that was, we will be on December second, oh, that's here, that's in the, that's resolution is here for tonight.
Is that a public meeting or if that's just a?
Sorry?
Do you know if that's a public meeting or if it's just?
Oh, yes, they want as many people to come as possible, it's, they're gonna give a presentation and, uh, accept suggestions and comments as well, so, yes, that's fine. That'll be supervisor Moore, I think, an architect, a couple of, uh, town board members and, uh, some other people.
You can six P M?
Six P M, December second, yes. And it's on our website, I asked library to put out the notification of the meeting, uh, Dr. Brooks is aware of the school, so, uh, spread the word because they'd like to spend input as possible. Okay, any, anyone else? Uh, next one, Junior Commerce has applied to have the, uh, treat light ages on December fourteen, December seventh, apparently Santa Claus is walking, December seventh. December fourteen. The upgrade of operation are, uh, the contingent of three gentlemen around our village. They're gonna come up with a proposal about locations and, uh, types of E V and some of the four proposals to us and, uh, I think it's gonna be, they were amazed, most of all, I think, with the three of them at our village. They very complimentary about the downtown and the Main Street. And I told them how Main Street parking is, uh, very much in demand, especially in the season, uh, and that I didn't think we would ever put an E V charging station in the middle of Main Street. Uh, or in the, our lot of parking, that's a high demand parking lot as well. The other place, existing place was accepted because it's a lower use parking lot. I think they got the idea that generally with our community, there is a challenge as to where to put the charging stations where they will be highly used and accessible and not impose on these other, uh, high demand areas. Because normally they, they gave the example as a railroad station, it's an ideal place to put E V charging stations. And I agree that would probably be a good place, but it's, it's not in our jurisdiction, so. But they will come back to us with a proposal of some sort. And charge, Matt is getting information on replacing the charging point, which is, uh, questionable because these gentlemen are of the opinion that charging, um, overcharges is not really interested in expanding their business, they're probably getting out of business at this point, so. There are a lot of things to consider. And we're gonna act this, I just wanted to update the court on that. Uh, number ten, we have a resolution to accept a donation from George Victor, towards, uh, towards the, uh, historical society research. So that is the, the resolutions. There's a resolution to amend the general fund warrant to, uh, include an omitted amount for the general fund and a resolution for an employee agreement. Out of that, if you ran, uh, thirteen, nine, that's a municipal vote, energy and aggregation program. I met with the gentleman who's offering to investigate our gas and electric use, natural gases and electric use and it's a program, I, um, they want me to sign an agreement, I asked.
Yeah, I just bring a note of it.
Okay. Okay, uh, they asked me to sign an agreement and as soon as I. Okay, uh, they asked me to sign an agreement and as soon as I saw the word school authority that I'm granting them, I said, I see. Exclusive, yeah, I, uh, decided it'd be a good idea to get legal opinion before I signed that one off, uh. So, and that's a work in progress as well. Um, the World War Two memorial update, this contact may build on a view once again. And apparently the V F W and the American Legion have a concern that there's only room for sixty names. So we are putting up a, a great assistance to him. And he came and met with me and we bounced around a couple of ideas. And the one idea that I think he, uh, responded to and liked was the fact that not only could we put a name, we, he wanted to put a poem of some sort on the face of the two, and then I suggested putting names on the front, the sides and the back. And eventually, if there's demand for more names, we have room to expand, we put stones in the round, around the two vertical stones to add more names as demand, uh, dictates. So he liked that idea and I think he's gonna move forward with that and approach the V F W and American Legion if that satisfies their concerns. Um, and I am meeting with him on Sunday, Friday to talk and do some more. So I just wanted to date you on that, I hope you don't have any concerns or objections to what I just described, that's it. Right, right, we're just trying to address the V F W, American Legion concerns, um, and, and work in harmony with them, so. Okay, any other questions from the board on that? Chris? It's, it's still the same two, it's, World War Two veterans, same two stones, it's just the engraving situation that's being discussed now.
Yeah.
Okay, because we already proved that, yeah, please remember that, uh, I, okay. So that leads us to the reading of the resolutions, on the focus of which is the special exception and the question that's been offered in the amulets.
We're in by special exception permit, Avenue, November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-four, the friends of West Hampton and Berance, the applicant, requested a special exception permit by the board of trustees pursuant to section one ninety-seven dash thirty C, eight point one, for an internally illuminated emergency services facility sign at the applicant's property located at three Hazelwood Avenue, West Hampton Beach, New York, subject to county tax map number nine zero five dash four dash two dash sixteen point one. And whereas the special exception permit application was subject to requirements of article eight of the code. And whereas section one ninety-seven dash seventy-seven of article eight of the code requires that the board of trustees refer the application to the planning board for its recognition. And whereas the planning board considered the application at its November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting and determined the following. The board has no objection to the application with the condition that the sign does not exceed the allowable square footage and height that applies with the village code one ninety-seven dash thirty C, eight point one, A to G. And whereas the application applies with code section one ninety-seven dash thirty C, eight point one, A to G. And whereas the applicant is a type two action under the state environmental quality review act, C P R, pursuant to New York C R R section six one seven dot five C nine. And whereas a public hearing on the application was held before the board of trustees on November seventh and continued to November twentieth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the board of trustees considered the matter set forth in section one ninety-seven, be of article eight of the code. We have resolved that the applicant's request for a special exception permit to install and construct an internally illuminated emergency facility sign at applicant's property located at three Hazelwood Avenue, West Hampton Beach, New York, subject to county tax map number nine zero five dash four dash two dash sixteen point one is hereby approved, subject to the following conditions. The illuminated portion of the sign shall be no greater than sixty-three inches in width and fifty point four inches in height. The total height of the structure shall not exceed seventy-five point six inches. And the total width of the structure shall not exceed eighty-seven inches, as shown on the application as option one B, classic jewel pillar monument. The base, sides and top of the sign enclosure shall be surfaced in brick, as shown in the application as option one A, classic brick enclosure rendered. Applicants shall comply with other provisions set forth in section one ninety-seven dash thirty C, eight point one subdivisions A through E. And it is further resolved that in accordance with section one ninety-seven dash seventy-nine of article eight of the code, the board of trustees determined that the special exception use will not prevent the orderly and reasonable use of the adjacent properties or of properties in the surrounding area or in care of the value thereof. That the special exception use will not prevent the orderly and reasonable use of permitted or legally established uses in the district wherein the proposed special exception use is to be located or permitted or legally established uses in adjacent districts. That the safety, health, welfare, comfort, convenience or order of the village will not be adversely affected by the proposed special exception use and its location. That the special exception use will preserve and protect the environment and be in harmony and promote with and promote the general purposes and intent of this chapter.
Thank you.
So there.
Okay, one favor. I want to thank Mr. Angel because he's, one of the reasons for this detailed, uh, resolution is some discrepancies within the application. He's trying to collate all the information, make sure it's, it's clear. Yes, I did, I did, so, it was lengthy but necessary, thank you, very, okay. Chris?
First special exception from the application, resolved that the board of trustees hereby referred the matter of specific special exception for the application suspended by a network structure. The work proposed at twenty-two old Riverhead Road, the county board for their constitution.
All in saying.
All southbound, if anybody wants to ride the, the, at the door show on December second, twenty forty-four. Next weekend, week behind for a meeting on the West Hampton community, so, we will be waiting.
Result that the Greater West Hampton Chamber of Commerce is hereby authorized to use the village green on December fourth, twenty forty-four, five P M to seven P M for your tree and your lighters.
Thank you. All right.
Please, I'll be for the trustee hereby underwriting, that, gratitude, appreciation, except for the challenge of meeting, for the makers. And it needed to exert consent of the historical society.
All your favor?
Aye. The government's working recipes here by amendment September twenty twenty-four, general on, on, to be eight hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and fifteen cents.
Second?
One more favor?
Aye.
Result that the board hereby ratified an agreement with employee number zero zero one zero nine six, authorizes the mayor to execute the same.
All your favor?
Aye.
With that being done, we have an executive session, I'd like to have you, I think, going to execute session, you take them down here.
Thank you.
All your favor?
Okay.
Yes. The lease officer.
Okay.
What's the agreement?
It's a very detailed agreement that I'd rather not go into, at this point, the board is aware of it. Thank you, thank you.